I'm going to bring this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a righteous and just as well.
We're up here. We don't have any guests tonight. With that, I'll move right into 3.20, 3.01. Okay, public participation and correspondence, three-minute limit, no discussion personnel, no exceptions. Closer board trustees welcome public comment on issues and concerns. This is the point in the meeting for comments on matters not already on the agenda. Comments on agenda items will be accepted when that item comes up during the meeting. Interested persons may also submit views in written form to the clerk or superintendent prior to the meeting and those comments will be brought to the attention of the board during the meeting. Do we have any correspondence or public participation?
Well, I spent about an hour this morning preparing a three-minute talk that I wrote my notes at home after talking to somebody that's important in the state of Montana. And I thought, you know, I think the most important thing I can do is share from my heart something that really impacted me when I was in graduate school. I had the unique privilege of working with Division One and NCAA athletes for three years at the University of Tennessee. I was a sports psychologist and a male trainer and I was a mental coach. I've been working with incredible gals. Many of them became Olympians, many of them were national All-Americans. And one of the side jobs that I worked with that group of athletes was with athletes with life control issues, whether it was eating disorders, chemical dependency, sexual promiscuity, you name it. And when I tell people that going through, you know, being slandered and called names in this community, I've been through a lot worse, believe me, I have, I've been through way worse. But what I learned in dealing with those athletes, those women, was that aside from their closest family members being the most common per trainer, it was their high school coach. And that is why it's so important as we go into getting ready for, hopefully, you know, if there are open positions and the teachers coming in, that when our principals and whoever else is doing interviews, that we go beyond looking at criminal background checks. Because our kids during their most vulnerable time, from grade school to the graduate and high school, are when some of the most families, the greatest images done. And it happens so often in our schools. And I just encourage all of you to be very, very mindful of that as you go through. Thank you.
Any other public comment? That alone? 4.01, here it is now. All right. Middle School Student Council.
Hello, Colster Public Schools Board. My name is Jonathan Stewart and I'm the FDMs student council president. I'm here today to kind of tell you what's been going on at our school, just the things that we've been doing and what we plan to do in the future. Starting off, I, at the beginning of my term, I started a suggestion box so that we could get more student comment than just members of our club and executive officers. Because I was in the club last year and I noticed that a lot of our ideas just came from us and not from anybody else. And if there were, we mostly ignored them. So I started a suggestion box and I got a lot of suggestions, which some of them we've already gone through with. They've worked really well. And the first one was a hat day, every day during dress-up days that we do at the middle school. And it worked really well. We raised a few more extra dollars and it pleased the students pretty well. The second one was a microwave, a second microwave in the cafeteria. And we did buy one and it has worked out really well. There have been less waits for heating up food in the cafeteria if you have brought home lunch. And a lot of people seem to be happier about it. Our second one that we're still deciding on the date is we wanted to do a video game competition after-school fundraiser or just elite club fun day after school. But we still don't have a date on that because we need to look at the track schedule and work our way into that. Our second, or our fourth one is we did a salad bar meet to discuss a salad, having the option of a salad bar with Mrs. Hansel, the lunch coordinator, and to discuss this possibility. And also, we thought about doing a healthy snack vending machine at the middle school. As you probably know, we have a Mustang card there where we have 30 printed little coins that you can pay for snacks after school. And so we thought that it might be a good idea to have a healthy snack vending machine that you can pay for with either those coins or with cash at certain times during the day, either passing periods or lunch or morning and afternoon. Four-day weeks were suggested and I know that a lot of planning has to go into this, so won't talk too much on that one. Movie days, a blitz day. We did one of these during, I think it was right after quarter one, first quarter, where students who had missing assignments or Ds and Fs would go and work on those during that day after a certain class period. And all the others would get a reward, like a movie or a game. And it seemed to work really well because we put a reward out and a lot of people and a lot of those students worked really hard to get their missing assignments up so they could join us. A father-daughter dance was suggested after. And, but, we found out that, the reason it was suggested is because dads were dancing with their daughters at the dance. But we found out that CPRD might have one, so we're gonna ask them about that and then tell the students later. Okay, moving into the last ones, phone Friday, a day on Friday where kids who have no punishments or something like that, depending on how we can do that, would get their phones or their device after lunch or during lunch for a certain amount of time. We're still deciding on that one. And then soda Fridays where you would, you'd get to bring a soda to school if you pay a dollar or $2 to bring it in. And then pajama Fridays for more of a consistent dress-up day. I also did, I noticed that with our schools, we don't really have a name for the mascot. I was kind of disappointed on that when I found out. So I looked at our mascot and I thought, what could we do to kind of hype it up? Because I have no idea how long it's been since the Mustangs mascot has made an appearance at anything. So I decided to make a naming the mascot contest where people would put their suggestions into my box and then we would have a ballot on them later. And that worked really well and the winner was Cole, spelt C-O-L-E. But because of, it's kind of funny. One of the traditions. Because of, instead of Cole, the name, we decided to go with more of Cole, so we spelt it C-O-A-L. And that's what we changed it to. And we thought that, I thought that maybe he could, the Cole, the mascot, the Mustang, could maybe appear at eighth grade promotion, fifth grade orientation, cleanup days, Earth Day, and then Fun Day, just to kind of hype those events up more and give him an appearance. We did have a dance, I'm sorry, I said Valentine's Day dance earlier. We didn't do a Valentine's Day dance. We did the snowball in January where we had the Helping Other People Everyday Club, the Hope Club, and the Multicultural Club, also run by Mrs. Peterson, help out with that. And it worked really well. And then we did, like I said, we did meet with Mrs. Hansel to discuss the options for school and we decided to do a survey with the student body to see what meals would be their favorites and what combinations of meals they would like to try. And to see if they would probably prefer that or a salad to whatever meal they had. That's about it, thank you.
Thank you so much.
That was really good.
Really good.
Takes the ball and runs with it and he's a great world model.
Nice job, Logan. All right. Jonathan, sorry. There's so many of them. We have no old business, so we'll move right into new business. 6.01, resignations for your guys' information purposes. So that's 6.02. This is, that's my, this is, okay. So I'd like to recommend for District Substitute, uh, substitute for 24-25 school year, Glenda Glenns.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approve Glenda Glenns as a district substitute for the 24-25 school year.
Second.
Can I have a motion, second, any public comment on this? Any further board?
So this person resigned and then...
We'll say when she can.
Okay, so it was a full-time, full-time position, so she's resigning and so, got it, okay.
Anything else? Wait, hi, Tiff?
Hi.
Serena?
Hi.
Hi. Uh, 6.03, Mrs. Hansel.
And I think Mrs. Anderson is online. Since you have a list of the graduation requirements correct, so we are proposing that we drop those by one and that we reduce the required math classes from four to three. The reason for that, it lines up with the other schools around our area. The university requirements are three for most colleges, universities. In our course description book, we do still list like a rigorous core where we encourage the kids if they're going into a math field or a science field or something, that they do go ahead and take four maths. It also would allow us to eliminate the senior math class and put statistics back in. And I'll let Mrs. Ramsey speak to that. It also lines up with the NCAA and NAIA requirements for student athletes, so, but, I'm calling that in.
I just think that instead of, at the current point, the statistics is kind of sprinkled amongst the curriculum in Algebra 1, Geometry, Algebra 2. Because with your standards for high school math, they're not like necessarily like, these are the standards taught in Algebra 1, these are Geometry, it's just like broad. And so the statistics and probability just kind of get chewed on in sometimes. And I feel that that is an area of weakness with our, many of our students. Introducing into the statistics curriculum, I think, could be really beneficial for students across the board, especially in a day and age where media literacy and like statistics literacy is really important, being able to read data, interpret data, and understand whether some things could be potentially misleading. I think it's also important for not just obviously those everyday life skills that students need, but I think it would be beneficial for those that are planning on going on to college in that preparation. Some students, when they go to college, will need to take that calculus track, which is currently what we offer. But other students would benefit more from that statistics class because many majors require statistics as the math class they need to take. So I think that it would better prepare those students who are going in that direction in college. So that transition from four credits to three credits would kind of free up the teaching schedule a little bit to be able to offer that statistics as an option for students.
I think it also helps those kids who aren't on a college track or that's not their interest. They're interested in going into the workforce right away or into a vocation. Because then, like if we can get our well-being certificate program back, if we can get the business certificates going again, that lets those kids pick up an extra class there. So, and I think that's a positive for them.
Now, is Tara online?
Yes, yes.
Does she want to say anything?
Hi, yes, I am, after conversations with Mrs. Ramsey, am in full support of looking at adding statistics to our course schedule. I feel like our vocational kids kind of struggle a little bit when they get to that fourth math. And this would give them a little more flexibility with their schedule as, you know, everyone has talked about, as well as offering the statistics, which is, you know, you'll see it across the board in varying degrees that are going to require that in college. So it is, it is a weak point and I definitely agree with Mrs. Ramsey that it would be a benefit to our seniors to have that as an option.
And I think what we're asking is for you to agree to change for the graduation requirement. We've taught statistics before, so we just, it'd be a process just to add it back into the course description book. That's not an issue. And then we would talk with Dole Life and go to the steering committee, hopefully, to look at making that a dual credit if possible. We're not sure that that will happen, but that would be our goal.
But I think even offering it just as a rate of the high school credit without the dual enrollment option would still be a benefit to a lot of students.
Is there, I guess, if we're only talking about going from four to three and that's our, that's our decision, that would be your decision to keep senior math? Is that what you're saying?
I think we would replace senior math with statistics.
Okay.
And then those students, instead of taking senior math, they could choose to go pre-calc, calc, or statistics. So it actually gives them three options with a little bit more rigor.
Is, so, going through a syllabus, if you looked at a syllabus for senior math, would that basically be kind of rehashing geometry and algebra? Is that what it is?
It is, and there's about a quarter of it that is dedicated to statistics and probability. But again, it's just like a portion of it. But senior math is targeted towards those kids who have finished Algebra 1, Geometry, Algebra 2 and then still need a fourth credit and, but maybe might not necessarily be ready to take like a college-level class. So it does kind of go over and extend topics brought up in those Algebra 1, Geometry, Algebra 2 track. And then of course, there is an addition of some statistics and probability in trigonometry.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding was that senior math was plugged in to help prepare kids for taking the ACT. And that's when most of them were taking it as seniors and just a few were taking it as juniors. And now that they're required to take it as juniors, it's become more of a place filler. So, and we would rather they are able to take something that's going to help them long-term. So, I mean, I have three kids that would have benefited greatly from a statistics class, so.
Mrs. Davenport, raise your hand, speak.
Uh, go ahead. I guess I'm guilty because I was gone a few days last week, so I didn't realize that this was on the docket until this morning, so I didn't get to talk to the teachers involved. I kind of have a concern because our math scores are a little low now and by dropping a math, are we going to improve that any? And then, did we do a student survey to see who might be interested in statistics? Because when we get up there, if a person starts in geometry, they go geometry, algebra 2, pre-calc, trig, and calc, where would the statistics fit in? How would we have enough, you know, are we going to alternate statistics and calc? I guess the other thing that bothers me when we drop a year of math, these kids are going to have a year without math. If we have lower-ended kids that are thinking about going to college but not going into engineering and they need a fourth math class, what are they going to take? You know, they're looking at an honors class they have to take, whereas when we had the senior math that gave them a good review to go into college. I think, I don't know, when I think about this, it's a pretty big decision for me, I think. And I was wondering, is this something that maybe should be a K-12 decision with our curriculum director involved? I don't know if this was done because I wasn't in school, I didn't get to talk to people, so I have no idea. But that was one question I had was, you know, if the curriculum director was involved and a committee type thing involved, or is this just a high school decision? What should it be? Thank you.
I can speak to some of it. And so, talking to kids, I know that quite a few students already who I have taking like the pre-calc, pre-calc, will still go and take the statistics class, like let's say at Dole Life or something during the summer. I've seen some kids do it online. So I know that the, like the desire to have that statistics is there, but I do think that Mrs. Davenport's right, it would be good to have some concrete numbers. And I don't have those as far as like students who have said whether they would be interested. I would say statistics should still be an elective credit offered that they can choose, as you said, after they've like completed that track of Algebra 1, Geometry, Algebra 2. So it would be kind of in addition to like the pre-calc, calc, or calculus. So I do think that, you know, we could potentially get some numbers. And, but I don't know that this is necessarily the final say today on whether or not we do this. But I think that it is something to look into, we can see what the student interest is. I don't, I don't have the answer to whether or not our scores are going to increase or decrease. I think that would be kind of hard to tell, especially since we don't test seniors at any level. The test, the last testing that they get is their junior year at the ACT. So I guess it would be hard to even look at schools because I do know, and Mrs. Anderson can corroborate with the schools that she's taught at, she's been at a few in the area. The three is generally the most common, with two being the bare minimum requirement from the state. So I know, like, looking at those schools, we can see what their test data maybe looks like. But I can't really speak to whether or not like those scores would drop because we can't really evaluate, or we haven't evaluated senior year. So that would be hard to compare. Is there anything else that can...
No, and we, the curriculum director wasn't involved when we started having this conversation because it's a course we've already taught. So there was a curriculum in place, it's not a new curriculum. We may have...
But it's a change in curriculum.
In graduation requirements.
In graduation requirements.
I didn't see it listed though today, I looked it up currently. We didn't have it in Infinite Campus.
No, but it's under the courses like previously taught but not offered. So it should be at the back.
Yeah, I looked through all three, Infinite Campus, that was my question, just what would we do first, adopt it or not? But I didn't know it had been taught before either, so.
Yeah, and I had to go back several years to find the original list. And so I actually made that as a note today that I can check the curriculum. There's that course description book list, so, because I think there are some other old classes that weren't on there.
Is the, is there a prerequisite for that? Is Algebra 2 a prerequisite for that? Okay, so you'd have to go through three and then get that as a four?
Yes, so it would be the option for students who, if we're going to make the requirement three to graduate, it would be another option for those students who are still planning on taking a four-year of math so that they have, you know, that to bridge on into college or potentially, if it would be a dual enrollment class, to get both the high school and college credit for it.
But calc and trig is still optional? They still take that if they want to?
Yes, that is still an option.
My first thought when I read that, I'm like, you can't take away a math, like we need all the math. But I researched and researched a ton of schools in Montana, they're all at three. I didn't find a single one at four. And the Montana University system requires three for admission. And any degree that's not science-based requires statistics, not calculus.
And I would still highly, highly encourage students who are planning to go to college to take four years because I do think that having that gap in between, as Mrs. Davenport said, can be detrimental to students. Having a year off in between like high school math and college math can be a difficulty. I will fully acknowledge that. So I think if we were to do this, we would still have to work closely with students on what their goals are and making sure that they are taking the classes necessary to meet those goals.
I think even having, having four right now, that doesn't allow for any wiggle room. I mean, if you fail a math class, you're not going to graduate according to, unless you take two maths in the same year. And so, I mean, that does seem a little...
That is another concern.
A little strict.
English standard is four.
Yeah.
Yes, so since they have to take four years of math and four years of English, those who maybe came in their freshman year and they maybe made some bad decisions when they were young, it's kind of sometimes hard to get back on track as they have to retake, you know, both of those for the...
Maybe a forum could go home to the parents that says, "I will require my child to take four math classes."
I would like to hear Derek's input on this.
Well, I said it's not going to happen today. It won't affect anything this year.
Yeah.
So.
Maybe let's get some more information, some numbers, get that course description, see if Dole Life will do that dual enrollment and then we can have a...
Bring it back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, 6.04. This is UVM boss. Oh, is it? It's pretty, sorry.
You can take it?
No!
I don't know what this one is.
I don't want to... This is our levies.
So this is our intent to impose an increase in the levies. We do this every year. But what it, what it basically is, is a rough estimate because we don't know all of the budget numbers. We don't know our taxable evaluation, there's a lot of things that we just don't know yet. And so the state requires us to give this out to the public just to give a heads up of, hey, this is potentially what we are going to do. But the budget isn't set until August, so when the budget actually comes through, that's when the final numbers are given. The only thing with this that I wanted to kind of chat with you guys about, and I put it on here so you guys could see it, is the state major maintenance aid under the building reserve. So for elementary, that's $48,042. This is totally optional. I put it on here so you guys could see because I did have somebody come to my office and say, "Hey, did you know you could be getting these funds?" And I said, "Yeah, I do, I've brought it to you guys before, do you want to do this?" The answer was no before. I thought maybe I would just touch it again this year since we do have a lot of building things going on. But basically what it is, there's $15,000 per elementary program or high school program plus the product of $110 multiplied by the district's budgeted A and B for the prior fiscal year, not to exceed 10 mills. And then the state matches it with a set amount, depending on how much we have. So the numbers for that are if we, if we levy the taxpayers for $48,042 in the elementary, the state will match us $8,647. So that's basically $8,647 that is free from the state. It's not a very good return in my opinion and I don't know if that's something, that's why I wanted to kind of bring it to you guys. In the high school, it's $27,627 that we would levy the taxpayers and the state would only match us $4,973. So that is something that you guys can just advise me on as we get closer to the budget. Doesn't have to, you know, you don't have to say tonight that that's what you want to do. I already put it on here, so that allows us to do it. But definitely when I go to the budget in August, we don't have to do it. Nothing on here says I have to do that, but I wanted you guys to have kind of a heads up of what that is. And then I wanted to give you a balance of what our building reserve fund is because I don't know if you guys know what that cash balance is. And that might be helpful for you guys to decide whether you want to do that or not. In the elementary, it's $385,709. And in the high school building reserve is $244,757.
Give me the elementary again.
So we've kind of stayed, I try to really stay out of that unless we have something major going on because the only way to refill that is by what I just explained. So if our general fund can pick up some of those maintenance things that, you know, your daily maintenance things or any big projects even that we have, then that's what we tend to go with first. So that's not comfortable for, for me as a business manager. But if you guys don't feel so, you can definitely look at raising that amount to the max that we can. But to me, I've kind of been able to stay out of it a little bit. I used some of it for the vegetables. I did use our portion that needed to come out of that, came out of the building reserve. But other than that, I've kind of stayed out of it. So I just wanted to give you guys all the information so that you guys could know what the option is. But if, if it were me, I'm kind of tend to leave it off because we're already putting a bond out there. You're already asking for taxpayers to pass the no levy. And to me, it would be more just like padding that account, which is obviously a good thing, right? Long term. Your building reserve is what's going to come in clutch when you really have some things break down. But turn over there. I wanted you guys to have those numbers. And then every year, we end up doing a little bit in technology. But the other funds, I feel like at this point right now, that those are good. So I've left those as zeros. So that's all you guys are kind of approving tonight is that. And you don't have to say yay or no on the building reserve. That's just information out there and then that gets finalized in August, so.
And if we don't levy into an account, is this where the coal gross proceeds won't funnel into those accounts either?
Yeah. But right now, it's really hard to tell, you know, where that's going to be. But typically, typically, there's been a little bit in adult ed because it funds the pool, it helps fund some of the electricity, technology. And there has been a little bit in transportation. But transportation's kind of been a little bit funny this year because we don't, we're not using two extra bus drivers. So right now, I left that as zero. But could be possibly when we do these that we do a little bit so that we can have some coal proceeds come in. So.
And I, this, Brittany and I talked about this building reserved on Friday. And I don't like charging our taxpayers $48,000 to get $8,000 back. I just think that's not a good return, especially when we're going to be asking for stuff. So I would prefer to leave those off. Even though we don't decide that right now, but.
We have, those funds are pretty good right now. So we've been fortunate not to have to use those. Some, I would tend to agree.
And that way, when you guys are asked later, you can say, that's why we, that's why we didn't. And that's why there was a lot of discussion too about it is because like right now is the biggest tax base that we have. And, you know, are we maximizing that? So that's where I kind of got some of the questions from. And it makes sense, but I feel like we're doing a lot of other things right now too that doesn't maybe make sense this year, so.
And really it takes out the kind of gray area that people might ask about, well, why, why didn't you use that for that and this for that? It's like, well, we're using general for all of it. And then keeping this as a, as a rainy day fund essentially. So, yeah. Not to them.
Okay, so we need to do this and then the numbers will be finalized in August?
Yep.
Which one do I, do you want me to do?
The elementary first.
Elementary.
I move that the Colstrip Public Schools Board of Trustees adopt the resolution of intent to impose an increase in levies for 29116 MCA for the Colstrip Elementary District for fiscal year '26 as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this? Need further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
Aye.
Do we need any discussion on the high school one? I move that the Colstrip Public Schools Board of Trustees adopt the resolution of intent to impose an increase in levies for 29116 MCA for the Colstrip High School District for fiscal year '26 as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this? Need further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
Okay. 6.06?
Kidopee. This is, since the board has decided to run a no levy, this is the, this is the numbers that will be on the ballot. And this is over base levy. So to recap that, everybody pays taxes. You pay your local, your county, your state taxes. So you do get a tax bill. And, but this over base levy, 80% of it is funded by the base for what normal taxes are taken out. For that extra 20%, and I believe sped is at 40%. 40% is at the base to get to 60% or higher to 100, you have to pass this over base levy. So the over base levy is $446,515 in the elementary and $145,314 in the high school. We did talk about that allows us to keep that budget authority. Also, we talked about that letter that goes out to taxpayers that we've done the last couple of years, doing that again. I don't know if that went to the board last year, but I was looking at it and it looks like maybe the board took action to do that, maybe.
We did.
So.
And then we stepped in.
So we will put that on the next agenda and have that ready to go. And.
Were you ever able to find out?
No, I didn't get an answer. But I'm hoping by the time, that'll give me two more weeks to.
Kind of find an answer. A definite answer on how much of this was covered by whole gross proceeds? Because that letter we send out tells taxpayers, we're not going to use their money. We don't have to.
Forget that.
But it'd be nice to have that definite answer in there. So we can say last year, this is what you approved and this is what you had to pay because this was covered.
Yeah, and the other non levy revenue that comes into play is that coal mitigation block grant. So that also reduces the amount of tax, taxpayers, how much taxes they have to pay in on your base as well. So they take in that non levy revenue. So that always helps us out a little bit. So, but as far as the coal proceeds, that is one that is above and beyond. So, yeah, I'll find out those numbers and hopefully we'll have that by the next, or for the letter. So. And then the whole thing has to be right.
Sure.
We'll pass that on.
The Board of Trustees of Colstrip School District Number 19 set the elementary general fund levy at $446,515 and approximately 10.72 mils. And the high school general fund levy at $145,314 and approximately 3.49 mils for the normal operational costs of the elementary and high school districts for the 2025-26 fiscal year. Passage of this proposal will increase the taxes on a home within market value of $100,000 by approximately $14.47 on a home with a market value of $300,000 by approximately $43.42 and on a home with a market value of $600,000 by approximately $86.83 in the elementary district. Passage of this proposal will increase the taxes on a home with a market value of $100,000 by approximately $4.471 on a home with a market value of $300,000 by approximately $14.13 and on a home with a market value of $600,000 by approximately $28.27 in the high school district. The durational limit of the levies is permanent once approved by the voters, assuming the district levies that amount at least once in the next five years. One second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this? Need further board? It's important we pass these levies. Even with everything else we got going on, these are our operational costs. So. All right, with that, Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Stewart.
All right, thank you. I've been learning about E-Rate. It's been an interesting journey the last couple of months. I have two proposals that need board action on. Two different E-Rate bids that Nicole Jones, our E-Rate consultant, helped Brittany and I put together. I'll start with the first one, the category one E-Rate. This is for our district internet service, a three-year contract. So currently, we use Range Internet for internet service. They, as far as I understand, this is the end, and June 30th of this year will be the end of a three-year contract that was started three years ago with an E-Rate funding source as well. So that service is coming to an end. So if we continue with another E-Rate, this is the time to do an E-Rate approval for that. So I put in the, I submitted for you just a full review package of highlighting a recommendation that Scott and I talked about. We, we are the selection committee that we looked at for the scoring matrix. And then I had some input from Nicole Jones on just basically how to look through this and make sure we were doing it right. This one's an easy one in that the, we put it out for bid for internet service. Two bidders put in for it. Range was one bidder and then another company called Cytranet. And looking at the RFP, which is asked for the internet service with a few details, Range came back with a very specific quote for the internet service plus some IP addresses which are useful for setting up our firewalls and routers to make sure it all works well on the internet. And then the company Cytranet just gave us a big general sales brochure packet of like everything they offer. And it seemed, and I'm not sure why that company did that, but it doesn't meet the requirements of the RFP and it's not clear and concise. And I have no idea what they would want to offer. And even looking at their numbers that they put in their brochure for internet services, they're way more expensive than Range would be. So I recommended that, or Scott and I looked at it. We recommended that the E-Rate for this category one is something that the district does need. And Range came in at a monthly cost of $1,480. And that would be for a three-year term. So that's why this is coming to the board because the total three-year commitment would be somewhere around $53,000 for the total three years. But I looked at the, the current cycle that we're on with Range and three years ago, they locked us into a three-year term that's more expensive than what they're quoting now. We're currently paying like $1,800 a month for internet service. So we get a little bit of a reduction for this latest quote. And it's something we need for the district. So we, we can use E-Rate if you guys approve. If you don't approve, then we still have to pay for it from somebody probably Range come July 1st to start a new service. And as, I'm still learning this with E-Rate, but as I understand it, the total cost for this project falls underneath the maximum dollar amount that E-Rate will cover. And so as long as we're under that, then the E-Rate funding provides a 70% reimbursement to the total cost and the district pays for 30% of that cost. So that puts us right around, somewhere around $400 a month if I understand the funded reimbursement that we'd be potentially paying out of the district fund. So that's an easy one. Really, only one bidder came in with an appropriate bid that matched the RFP. So I recommend that you approve it, but I'm new to E-Rate. So let me know your questions or I'll just listen to what you know from past years of doing E-Rate projects.
I mean, my, my biggest question is, does this really need to come before the board? Because it's an annual, I, I was trying to put more of a policy where we set a year limit for $50,000. And if that's an annual rate, this would not exceed that.
Yeah, we were going to, and then Brittany checked with our auditor.
Okay.
And she said we shouldn't have, I can't remember the reason.
The commitment of three years, you're, you're signing off that you're committed to pay this if you sign in a contract and it was over the 40.
Okay.
So they were, they were pretty clear with that. But if it's over 40, you need to do it. Because then that's binding, wouldn't have that audit meeting I can have last week. And I would have had to say. Wouldn't have to say oops. We let one go. So that's basically what you're approving, not really the E-Rate process, but.
And we have to have internet service.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I move that the Colstrip Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the E-Rate options as presented.
One second.
Do we, do we have to say, you have to say the?
Oh, do I need to say that it's Range? And what category?
I kind of feel like you just need to approve the invoice.
The rest of it would be Evan.
Yeah, yeah. But you approve the expenditure that is over $40,000. That's what I feel like.
Okay.
The motion should be. You want to redo it?
Do you want me to?
Yeah, kind of. Because it really, because the, the way it's worded is that you approve the E-Rate options. And I feel like you're not really approving that. You're approving the invoice.
Okay.
The expenditure. Yeah, so you're saying that you approve the expenditure that exceeds $40,000.
Okay.
For E-Rate. We could say something like that.
Internet service maybe.
Category one.
Yeah.
And category two, are you doing them both at the same time?
I didn't spoke to that one there.
You have it second? Okay.
Yeah, I gotta speak to that one.
Okay.
Okay. I move that Colstrip Public Schools Board of Trustees approves paying the E-Rate invoice exceeding $40,000.
Second.
Right, Brittany?
Oh, yeah. That was great.
Got it.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this? Need further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
Aye. All right, what's the difference for category two?
Category two is a different category for E-Rate, meaning that it's a, it's a service that supports internet for student use, but it's not directly tied to internet service. So category one's, it's more of like that foundational piece of internet service. So the category two could be a couple of different varieties of projects. But this one is for refreshing our wireless access points. So that little white box that's sitting above you on the ceiling, that's a wireless access point. And that provides wireless internet to any device that's within reach. So we have something like 74 of those around the district. So category two is an option because that is not like, it is critical for internet with our environment, but we could also use wires and plug in computers to wires and get our internet that way. And category two allows for schools to get some funding to, to assist with like kind of accessory, accessory items that serve the student internet provision. So this would be, this again is coming to you because it is over that 40,000 mark. But I also like it's coming to you just for a larger picture because this bid went out and we had four responses to this bid. And this bid is not a annual contract. It is a one-time project that would happen in the '25-'26 fiscal year. And it's an expensive project for that year. So refreshing these access points is recommended because the manufacturer support life is coming to an end this year. These access points will continue to work past that end of life from the manufacturer. But if something were to happen to them, any of them, we don't have support from the manufacturer anymore for warranty or software or whatever. The manufacturer would just say, fix it yourself or buy a new one from us. And with us having 74 of these around the district, I, it's helpful. And it's also an industry recommendation that a critical backbone component in your network, you should just upgrade it at the same time if you have the budget to do it. that a critical backbone component in your network, you should just upgrade it at the same time if you have the budget to do it. And this total project just for, and this is just for the equipment, so we purchased those devices, they get shipped here, and then my team would install them, and then we would do a separate service with our network managers to do some configuration for them. So just for the equipment, if we bought it out of our own budget, is about $53,000, and that's doing all the buildings. So we have the opportunity for E-Rate, which would allow us to take a burden of 30% of that $53,000, and then E-Rate would cover 70%, that I think would just go to the provider somehow that reimbursement works. So I bring it to you that it's, there were four bids. We had really three that were considered because that company Cytranet put in a bid, and again, they just gave me a sales brochure of everything they offer, so there was no true bid for what the service was. We had two bids for the exact replacement or the next generation model, the model we're already using. And then another company offered a separate brand that, it's a good brand, but there's no guarantee that it would work with our existing management systems, so that scored lower, and they also had a higher price. And then the two companies that offered the same make and model or the same manufacturer, but the newer model for these, we do know it's going to work with our system, and it came down pretty close to pricing, just about a thousand dollar difference. And Pine Cove was the winner on price, but also with some other information they put in the bid to guarantee licensing, because we have to pay a software license for every, well, all 74 that I asked for, 74 items or access points. And then it came with some, they didn't have much shipping cost on it, where the other company, Communication Resources, did that. So really, really minor differences in the pricing, but some of the direct bidding and knowing that it's going to work with our system, Pine Cove's quote was more direct, where I could say, yes, I know it's going to work, whereas there was the question of licensing and a few other things with Communications Resources that I wasn't sure if they included in that bid or not.
Is Pine Cove now anywhere?
What's that?
Where is Pine Cove now?
Pine Cove does manage our network, and that's a reason why in this bid, I went with equipment only, because with E-Rate, we do have to have a fair and open bidding process. And Pine Cove and Communication Resources also put in their bid as an optional thing to have an installation and configuration. But in my recommendation letter, whoever has to approve that bid if we want to go with it, I recommend that we only take the partial bid of exactly what we're expecting with equipment, because Pine Cove being our network service manager, they have knowledge of our installation configurations that the other bidders do not. But the RFP only asked for the equipment, and because the RFP asked for the equipment, even if we wanted to go with installation and configuration, E-Rate won't cover that because it wasn't part of the RFP, so...
Is there a kind of a lifespan that these things hold or their serviceable lifespan?
Yeah, on the bid that Pine Cove and even Communication Resources put in, that there would be a five-year bundled warranty, which Nicole Jones told me that that is coverable by E-Rate. So a warranty by itself is not eligible for E-Rate, but if it's bundled with the eligible item, then that's allowed. But yeah, so we would have it for five years. And I forget what we currently are at. It's either, it'd be three years or five years on the existing access points, because they were installed before I arrived. And it's something we don't have to commit to this year, but by next year, we would, by the '26, '27 budget year, we better start looking at it for sure, because the longer we wait, eventually, we're going to have to replace these access points. And we're looking at about $53,000 total. So I recommend that we do it now since we have an E-Rate option, but that's up to the board and administration if you want to hold off on that, because it is a large cost for right now.
So the district's fund, if we went with Pine Cove, would be $16,010.28?
If I understand the math, yes.
Okay. And then the reimbursement would be the 37?
Yeah.
Okay.
So whereas the category one E-Rate bid is absolute, we have to have it by July 1st, this one, maybe we could wait a year. Access point's been doing well, but if you're okay with it, I would say we can do it for this next budget.
Do we know what's in our technology budget?
Well, it's really hard to tell because the end of the year isn't done, and salaries and benefits and everything like that comes out of there.
Okay.
But the technology fund, I think last year had about $150,000 in the elementary and lower than that in the high school as carryover, basically. So I think we're okay, and that's why when it comes to budget time, I take all of these things into account.
Yep.
So that when that time comes, we can look at that and be like, do we have enough to cover that? Plus all the expenditures that we, you know, kind of take an average of what we've incurred over the last three years. So I think we're, we're okay to do that now. And that, what he's done takes a lot of work too, you know? And it's a lot of work to then turn around and do it again next year. So I'm with Evan of just get it done.
Does the, do the current bids allow for expansion if, I mean, if we add, you know, another 10 or 20?
Yeah, I put in there, I was saying 74, and now I'm getting my numbers mixed up if that's... So I requested 74. Right now, we have 69 access points. So I did request for extra, because we have identified some areas that could use a little bit stronger signal. But I don't foresee us needing major expansion anywhere. It's, there's a few weak spots at the middle school, one or two classrooms at the elementary school that could be increased, and maybe here at the high school, up in like the tech window area, we've had some reports of just weird wireless internet problems. So yeah, I did include something for expansion, but we're not, that 74 should be perfect for what we need, yeah. And that includes three external access points that are different from like this little box up here that handles coverage for the stadium to kick stuff over, and then also the bus bar. We have an external access point that piggybacks from the elementary school.
I think of the funds over there.
That's, I agree.
And we get away, turn down that cost savings.
Yeah, I agree.
And then part of the E-Rate contingencies is that we, the final commitment to it is dependent upon budget constraints of the school, so I don't think we're committed, if we said yes right now this week, that we have to do it when we find out, oh, we don't have the money for it come July 1st, so.
I remember that email she said that in, yeah.
That's correct.
Do you agree?
I move the Culture of Public Schools Board of Trustees approves category two E-Rate option invoice over $40,000. Right, Brittany?
Okay.
One second.
Okay, a motion second. Any public comment on this? Need for the board?
I was going to say, I appreciate when the wireless does work, because I remember when we didn't have good access points, and I'd have to bring my computer out to the hallway to connect and be like, where are you connecting? So it is like, you think it's a small thing, but it's not when you work with all the brick in our high school. It's not an easy thing to have to go out into the hallway and then get Wi-Fi connection and then go back into your room to teach. Because we were at that point at one time, Evan, where you didn't have good access points in certain classes.
I wanted to add too, just from the auditors too, the reason why you have to do that, even though you're getting that discount rate, like you said, we have to pay that invoice, so it depends on what that number is on that invoice. And then if we get reimbursed, they don't really care, they care that you approve that initial invoice.
Yeah.
Okay, Wade?
Aye.
Tiff?
Aye.
Serena?
Aye.
All right. Okay. With that, we're moving into the work session. Still this report.
Well, we've had a few things done or in motion. We got the door put in, the oxygen at the middle school. Everything's rolling for the art room floor, picking that up. And then the 20th, we'll have the guy here that arrays the football fields, 20th of April, to array the football fields. Doors ordered for the high school, got those coming. My guys have got all of our equipment ready for spring, so once we start throwing grass, we're ready to go. Knocking out work orders, all that kind of fun stuff. About that.
I did look, and it, from created to closed on the tickets for March, it was about two days, less than two days.
I saw that too.
For that, so I mean, kudos, I mean, nice job. I mean, that's awesome. Get those things closed as soon as possible.
Yeah, we're just working down the line on some of the older stuff from that maintenance list as we have time to get her done. CEI is working on the auditorium right now, so. I got a few other things done for us last week, so.
Perfect.
I was looking at the year-to-date list too. There's only three things that are waiting on third-party, which is great. And then there was like 17 that are open, just a couple really old ones, but I don't know what they are for sure. One of the waiting on third-party is from you, Jen, but it just says CHS M36, little area outside of upper handicap bathroom. It doesn't have...
That one got fixed after the report was ran, because it's right about that handicap bathroom, there's no light in there.
Oh.
So that tournament, and anytime we go skis, people are like, there's a bathroom. I'm like, yes, it's just right in here.
Okay.
So that's what it was, it was fixed.
Great. And there was 402 tickets for the year, and everything has been resolved except the 16 or whatever. Yeah, that's good. Good job.
That's a good group.
Yeah. Good job.
Can you get it done? Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Mr. DeSoul?
So I submitted my report. I don't know if you guys have any questions on that?
I don't, I don't think so.
Other than when are you going to hire bus drivers?
Well, when they apply. I question every single day.
I think Tony asked me Friday.
That's every chance you have.
Yeah. You know, I mean, there's, we've had nibbles, we've had people that express interest in it. You've got to put your pen to your paper and actually come in and apply. You can't put a gun to anybody's head and make them. I mean, that's, I would tempt it to.
We have some people who are waiting on testing.
So we do, we have guests, and they are, one of them did pass the written test and is now waiting, is going over her driving test. And then we had someone take the written test and fail it, but they need to retake it, and so they'll then be able to go for it. And again, we've had a gentleman who has all this stuff, and we've been trying to get him to fill out his application, and I know Ryan is on him, because me and Ryan converse about this guy frequently. And he is reaching out to him, and he goes, I'll come in, I'll apply, you know, he's got to do it.
Yeah.
And I think, I think, you know, we kind of were laughing about it a little bit, like, yeah, I think we call an emergency board meeting here. So, because that's where we're at, you know, it's just, we actually have to get that in, and we have to be able to go through that process. You've got to have an application first.
Right.
And are all of your guys licensed?
No.
Trying to?
Trying to. One of them didn't pass, was one of my guys. The other one's still working through his videos.
Okay. Because that's in their contract, right?
Then we'll get them there.
I did want to give a shout out to the cheerleaders who went to the competition last week or this weekend. And the first time that we've gone, and they took state in a cheerleading competition, so pretty awesome.
Good job.
Did a great job.
Okay. 9101, Stewart?
The E-Rate was my big part of the technology report, just worked on that the last few weeks, and try to get that ready for this week, the closing window. And so Nicole will be happy to have our final answer quarter by tomorrow. And then another big item is the new messaging app for teachers to parents and students called Rooms from our website provider, Thrill Share. We did a training with all teachers on Friday. It was a brief training, 45 minutes, that we did a video training with trainers from Thrill Share to show teachers how they can log in to this product and just give them a very quick crash course of what it looks like. So there's nothing implemented yet as to, teachers are starting to use it, which is the beginning of getting the teachers familiar with what we're talking about and how they can manage classroom communications. And then me and the project team, which includes the principals and Scott and the project leaders from Haptige, will be talking about a next step of the project to send notifications out or some invitation out to parents to have them sign up for a Rooms account, a free account, that they will get access into this messaging app. That's going to be a long process, but we're going to figure out a way to just notify them and start getting people on board with the app before teachers start to use it. And the goal would be use the rest of the semester plus the summer to get everybody, all the parents on board as much as we can, so that come the next, the beginning of the next school year, the program will be fully ready for teachers to start communicating with parents and students. So I got some good feedback from teachers, a few things we need to look at and tweak, but that is moving along. And I hope to have more information for you next month as to when we're going to start making community announcements of what this is and what it will benefit. And a few teachers have volunteered to be kind of early adopters this school year to work with their parents to see if we can get some classes using this and just get real life feedback from how it's worked and how that goes.
Is that something that sponsors and coaches can use to set up groups for, instead of Facebook?
Yes.
So one thing that I ran into with this, because I've actually been playing with it, because I want my coaches to use it, because they do use a variety of different platforms that are varying oversight. Our coaches that are not on teaching staff, I can't designate them as, as being, you know, like the lead of the room.
Yeah, okay.
So then, and I, so, I mean, that's probably a simple workaround, it's probably just a toggle somewhere. But I know we did come up with that, and I noticed that going.
That's good to know, because I, that was in the back of my mind, but I haven't played with it yet. So that, since they're not in Infinite Campus, as a staff member assigned to a roster, will create those accounts manually in Thrill Share and give them access to rooms. So I could get a list for them later.
Figured out something really simple.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be a really good one to test out is how well it works with manually creating user accounts.
Yeah, and it'll be good, because we can actually, because they'll want to communicate with kids over the summer as the school year ends.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that's kind of a, like, a high school soft, a soft start.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks for pointing that out. So what Tom's talking about is he would manually create a classroom, and all the student information is already in Room, so he would create a class, assign the adults that need to be in there. We've used just school email accounts, which my team has been building out for all of our coaches. Even if they're not using it, we do have a school email account for coaches. And then he or whoever is in charge of that extracurricular club would just create it, assign the adults to it, and then manually assign the students that are on that team. But the rest of the classrooms that are rostered already in Infinite Campus, that piece automatically happens every night at around midnight, Infinite Campus will sync with Rooms, and that's happening now. So that as students are moved around to different schedules, especially at the beginning of the year, the next day after a schedule change, that teacher will automatically have that student in their classroom and have the parent attach that student already in the classroom. So a lot of automation is happening with this product that is not happening with our other messaging programs that we're currently using.
So when he adds the athletes or the club members, then the parent automatically gets added? Can the coach have one just for their... Can the coach have one just for their team without the parents? Because I know they have their own message.
Well, I, I don't, I, it's, I don't see a way for you to separate the parent or the student from the guardian. Um, but I've yet to play around with it enough to see how messaging, so maybe there's a way that the, uh, teacher or the sponsor can message students and it's not notifying the parents as a, as an update. But the, the idea is to, to have that shared component of student and guardian information or, or connection. So that guardianship is coming from Infinite Campus, so the student will always be tagged with their guardian in Rooms because that's how they're associated in Infinite Campus.
Okay.
Yeah. But it's a good question to see what, what kind of communications are always showing up, either for the student or the parent. But I expect that the parent will have the ability to get into that message thread to see, uh, what's going on with their student.
Yeah, I would want them to have that. Like, that's, that's a big part of oversight is, you know, the sort of, I mean, it's the he said, she said, or.
Yeah.
One of our clubs right now that we're in uses the Band app, which I know that a couple of our coaches have tried to use.
Yep.
But actually, it works really slick, so I hope it's, has a, it has its own calendar. It ha, it's almost set up like a social media where they can post stuff and, and you can comment on it. But it's way better than Facebook, only the people they add to those apps.
Yeah.
So I'm hopeful that we can get away from the Facebook groups and.
Yeah.
Get into something more secure.
Yeah, that's the big goal of Rooms, is to, to push out those third-party apps. It doesn't, some teachers had asked for Rooms to replace other district communications, and I told them, no. We're still going to have printed letters that go out to parents. We're still going to have something from Infinite Campus being sent out. But a teacher did ask if we had communications happening through Rooms to the parents about grades. Could that maybe replace or reduce some robo calls that come from Infinite Campus? And I, I said, that's a whole other side topic that we'd have to look into, why we're sending those out through to the campus anyways. But it doesn't replace our critical systems, but it does get rid of the Facebook or the Sports2U or the Band app or Slack or these other things that the administration team does not have access into if there is a, an issue. Uh, another question a teacher asked with the, uh, in some of the sped classes is, does the parent have the ability to see all the students that are in that class? And that's kind of similar to this question of the, the coaching and, or the sports of parent or student. So that's another thing I'm looking into and going to ask the project team of, because the idea would be, if my child's in a sped class, I want to be able to see my child's in there, but maybe I don't want another parent to see that my child is in that class. So those are questions we'll, we'll figure out, can be answers to as we start using.
They could be set up for specific groups. Some groups you're going to want to be able to see everybody.
Yeah. But this was designed for K-12 in mind because of all these questions and concerns you've already brought up. So I'm, I'm confident Thrill Share has a solid product that they've, they've worked this out.
Cool. Good. Thank you.
Steve, I was just, sorry, thinking, so you said the cheerleaders won state?
Yes.
The last time we had a state champion team, we had a parade for them. We had the girls' basketball.
Yeah, that's true.
One state.
Ben Johnson.
And we had a parade for them at like four o'clock in the afternoon or something like that. Because I remember taking the boys, fire, fire trucks, it was paraded through, and they were on like a, yeah.
So, it's, 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 and again, I will do what you guys want, but this was not an MHSA competition. This was Cheer Fest. It's an additional thing. They raised their own money. They went to this, they paid for it out of pocket. It's not like a mandatory thing. Now, they did finish first in Class B. I'm not trying to take away from that. We were extremely proud of them. I mean, it's awesome, you know? And, and I, they just having firsthand, gone back and forth with Tiana and, and watched how hard they worked and, and, you know, what they put into this, you know, that's, yeah, they, they put a lot of work into it, and we should celebrate and be proud of them. Um, but again, it's a little different than, you know, an MHSA sanctioned event and, and coming away with that. Because I don't know that every team in Class B had the opportunity to, to compete with this. I mean, it's, it's a, it's an outside-of-school, uh, optional function, so.
I mean, it was just a thought.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, and, and again, if we want to do that, yeah, heck yeah, let's do it, because again, it's not something, like, it is, it's a big deal.
Well, I think that's your call for the athletic director. It was just a thought.
Okay.
Sorry, Steve.
No, you're fine. Ten one oh-one. Strategic plan.
Um, do we have an editable document of this?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think.
You wrote in that you'd go on this one.
Okay. Page eight has a part of that template that Deborah sent us. It's blank.
Just the one that talks about research.
It's blank, yeah, yeah.
We didn't know what that was.
It was optional wording that she had provided us at one point, so we can just take that out.
Yeah, she and I talked about that, so we left it in there so you guys could look at it today. See if I can just be stroked.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I didn't see anything that needed to be updated at this time.
I didn't either.
Other than that, I, I hadn't, didn't either.
The only thing that, when I went through it, the only thing it reminded me of is if you guys got that forty voucher we done.
I did it.
You didn't?
I did it. I did it.
I got into it today, and then I got right back out. We had to filter.
I didn't do them, remember?
I got my notes.
We did, right here. We did. Right now I did them last year.
Because there was some confusion last time, and I'm not going to point fingers.
We completed them.
Somebody didn't complete them.
Here, that night.
That night, yeah.
We did only one done, and I guarantee I did it. There was only one done.
I know. Deb told me that. All right, if you have any other questions with that? Thank you all.